I mean, what do you think the problem is? They just are not educating their... The owners are not educating their workers? They just don't care?
Well, that's part of the issue. I think the other part of the issue is that it's not a priority for them. You know, there's so many things going on in these bodegas. If you go in, you've probably been in many times before, loud music, a lot of movement, a lot of traffic, and I don't think this rises to that level. So they think of this as a priority here.
Until they get a fine.
Right, but most people actually ask for ID. So it's still a minority that don't.
Okay.
It's quite a significant number of states.
Let's try.
So they'll be receiving a fine of $1,000 and then if they choose to appeal, they have a second day to do so. If they don't, we're going to schedule a hearing so you can look at suspending that permit for one day, as you decided before.
Okay, sounds good. All right, let's go to 527 Hebron Street, Department One. Okay, well, we'll go to PMP, just PMP.
Okay, so 527 Hebron is here. Do you want to do that one first or PMP?
All right. Señor... Señor Godoy. Okay, mira, parece que ya recibiste la subpoena?
For me.
For you?
For me. So the inspector originally was assigned to this case, Subaliz Domínguez, is no longer with this case. It was transferred to me and so I received a call from the counselors representing Ms. Martinez and they requested another inspection, which we already had scheduled and they also subpoenaed me to present that evidence in court. It was supposed to be today, but it was changed for another day, Friday. Friday morning. Before you is the last inspection. Mr. Godoy sent you a copy for your record. So pretty much what we have is still the same issues. The infestation of roaches is very egregious, is substantial and what we thought probably best for this case is to have an integrative pest control assessment or plan for this... Not for only this unit. I think the whole building has to be reviewed, evaluated, and analyzed, like where is the root cause for these issues. So it's not only these units. Something that we can probably take into consideration when these things happen is the type of roof that we've seen is in dropped ceiling tiles. They could be behind the walls. They could be in the ceilings. And so what are the different root causes for these infestations? So it's not a problem of only one unit. It has to be seen from all aspects.
Tú eres el dueño del edificio.
Sí, correcto.
¿Y tú entiendes exactamente lo que la ciudad quiere que haga?
Eh, sí.
¿Sabes que es un integrated pest management plan?
Eh, tengo entendido de que es la compañía, la compañía de pest control tiene que hacer un plan que es lo que van a hacer en el edificio.
Pero tiene que evaluar el edificio completo, no solamente el apartamento que tenemos aquí en el... Ya ha pasado un mes, no, no... Hablamos de última vez, pero no tiene todavía un plan.
Yo llamé a la compañía y le pregunté si ellos hacían eso y me dijeron que sí. Les vi el teléfono suyo para que se comunicaran con usted para que les explicara exactamente qué era lo que tenía que hacer y que lo hiciera. Eh, ellos me dijeron que se iban a comunicar con usted. Le di su correo electrónico, toda su información, su número de teléfono y todo. No sé si se comunicaron. Llamé ayer, pero la manager, la persona que me atendió, aparentemente en ese momento no estaba disponible y me dijo que le estaban dando seguimiento. De todas maneras, ellos vienen mañana porque ya... Yo tengo un contrato por un año y ellos ya están viniendo. Esta es ya la tercera vez, es la cuarta vez que vienen. El problema ha disminuido un poco, ya no está como antes. Pero uno de los problemas es de que la inquilina tiene que colaborar con la limpieza. Yo estuve ayer allá todo el día como otra persona, trabajando y arreglando lo que usted me puso ahí. El 95 por es... El 95% de lo que usted me escribió aquí está terminado. Lo hicimos ayer, salimos ayer a las 5 de la tarde. Debo reconocer que la inquilina ayer colaboró, nos dejó entrar y nos dejó trabajar, no tuvimos ningún problema. Pero hay una situación de que si la limpieza ahí no mejora, la misma compañía dice de que eso no se va a solucionar porque ya deja la basura allá afuera. Vea, y vea, tiene un perro adentro, vea cómo está ahí. Yo tuve que meterme allí a pintar ese cuarto así como estaba, con tal de determinar, ya que ella me había dado permiso para hacer, quería hacer todo lo posible. Eso no es justo, una persona no puede vivir así. También ella tiene que colaborar. Si ella no colabora, no vamos a poder hacer nada. Yo no tengo problema en hacer lo que ustedes me digan porque nadie más que yo está interesado en solucionar este problema. Yo no quiero estar con eso siempre. Yo ya gasté suficiente dinero, estoy perdiendo mucho dinero. Ella me debe 13,000 dólares y ya. Y yo sigo, sigo, sigo perdiendo dinero, pero si lo tengo que hacer, lo tengo que hacer porque hay que solucionarlo. Pero ella tiene que colaborar.
Sí, bueno, vamos a esperar que en la próxima reunión que tenemos un integrated pest management plan de la compañía que la directora aquí está de acuerdo con el plan y esperamos que colabora la inquilina.
Otra cosa, yo no sé si sería más fácil si usted llama al número 1-800 de esta de la compañía, da mi dirección, mi número de teléfono y dice que está llamando en relación a esa propiedad porque necesita un plan, plan que ustedes necesitan. O yo no sé si voy a la llamar ya.
No me han llamado, pero como usted es el dueño de la casa, usted es el que tiene que hacer los... las obligaciones. Mi deber es solamente decir que estas son las violaciones y esto es lo que el Código de Salud pide, pero las acciones para tomar, para reparar y todo eso, usted es el que decide. Más de felicísima de llamar con usted. Usted viene aquí, usted lo llama junto a mí y puede nos ayudar.
Eso es buena idea.
Sí.
La otra cosa es de que cuando yo termine eso, que seguramente va... Estas, estas violaciones que seguramente va a ser el... Por el viernes. Y yo la llame, me gustaría que... Si se podía hacer la reinspección tan pronto yo termine porque la vez pasada yo hice todo lo que aquí decía y la inquilina no me de cuenta por tres veces. Entonces me gustaría terminar con eso, que vaya. Si hay algo malo, pues yo lo arreglo, no tengo ningún problema.
Vamos a hacer lo mejor que podamos para ponerlo en reinspección.
Gracias, gracias.
All right, todo por next.
Hola, próxima. Sí, ¿qué fecha es?
Eh, le dejamos a lo lindo.
Me dejas a lo lindo.
Okay.
Gracias. Okay. Vamos a pasar a PMP Deli Grocery, Mr. Godoy. I mean, Mr.?
En Arober.
Okay, muy buena.
Ustedes son todos para este...
Son todos el dueño de encarcelamiento.
Uno conocido, otro no sabe por mucho tiempo.
Okay, okay, okay.
Y uno...
¿Y quién estaba trabajando ahí antes cuando pasó la locura?
No, no está.
Ninguno de ustedes, ninguno. Sí, ninguno. Dice no, no, no. No está respondiendo. Okay, mira, por lo que entiendo ustedes quieren restablecer el permiso de vender comida.
Si se lo puede conseguir.
Es que eso... Mira, en 37 años en la ciudad nunca he visto una cosa tan loca preparando cocaína y heroína en el mismo lugar donde preparan comida. ¿Cómo puede haber contratado gente así?
Me disculpo de antemano. Es una situación que a mí me avergüenza. La persona que estaba ahí era, es, de mi entera confianza. Una persona que yo creo 100% porque no hay cualquier persona. No hay cualquier persona.
Pero con quién habla, ¿de quién hablan? ¿De esta gente encarcelado? Esta gente es...
De uno, uno específico.
Era una persona de confianza.
De entera confianza, es mi hermano. Por eso hice... Puse esa bodega a mi nombre. Yo no trabajo eso, yo tengo mi trabajo. Yo quise ayudarlo a él para que se mantenga él, mantenga a su familia. Yo lo puedo poner a mi nombre en la bodega porque él no tenía documento para que usted trabaje, mantenga a su familia. Yo no tengo ningún derecho en la bodega. O sea, simplemente quise ayudar como hermano que son porque la situación está difícil. Yo estaba ajeno a todo lo que se estaba moviendo ahí. Las pocas veces que vine a la bodega, todo estaba bajo control, todo tranquilo.
Sí, pero mira, hace tiempo que ustedes venden medicinas que no deben vender. Venden cigarríos que importan de otro estado. Venden cigarríos con sabores que es ilegal en Estados de Massachusetts. Y encima de todo eso, la locura de lo que estaba pasando ahí. Es que tu hermano no fue de confianza, era un mal aparecido. Porque de verdad es que tú para restablecer tu licencia... Hay varias cosas. Primero, hay una multa bien grande de vender cigarríos de New Hampshire. Eso es una infracción muy grande porque ustedes nos están parando impuestos. Es totalmente ilegal, no en Lawrence, en el estado, es una ley. Es una cosa. Segundo, vender tabaco de sabores también ilegal en Massachusetts. Otra multa para eso. No estoy ni hablando de la cocaína y la heroína que estaban vendiendo ahí, ni los crack pipes, ni la alcedena fill, ni cosas que no tienen derecho, no tienen licencia de vender nada de eso. Si tú quieres meterse en el negocio de una bodega, no vas a poder vender nada de eso. Y no sé quién va a manejar ese negocio, pero cuesta muchas licencias, educación, y hay cosas que simplemente no puedes vender. Yo sé que es difícil, y más difícil cuando no tiene documentos, pero por Dios, hay que seguir la ley hasta hacer el punto.
Sí, en eso yo estoy 100% claro. Tengo muchos años en este país, nunca he tenido problema con algo.
¿Y quién va a manejar esta bodega si tú tienes tu propio trabajo?
Ahí voy a tratar eso. Yo tengo que mudarme a Lawrence. No voy a mudar para tratar de sacar a flote el negocio, la bodega. Hasta porque cerradas no voy a encontrar quién me la compro y voy a perder todo. Quiero tratar de ver si me concede el club ejo de la mordida o voy a darnos el permiso para que yo pueda vender la bodega o si veo que me funciona, que puedo sobrevivir de ahí. Pues yo me mudé y me quedo ahí cuando me lo digan.
¿Donde vives ahora?
En este Massachusetts. Entonces está una bodega aquí. Está próximo a Worcester.
¿Y dónde está?
Tan... Tantas cosas malas que pasaron, tantas cosas ilegales que están haciendo es duro para yo decir que te voy a dar un chance porque usted es dueño y firmando un papel usted sabe que usted tiene que estar en control de eso. Hermano, no. Yo tengo hermano que me ha hecho... Que perdió miles de dólares porque mi hermano es vergüenza. Y yo sé que yo no doy mi nombre para mi hermano y lo quiero, es mi hermano.
Yo solo entiendo. Hasta este momento, el hermano no me ha fallado porque por eso, por eso yo no hago eso con nadie. A mí puede venir 15, si me voy a poner, no. Gracias. Hay... Hay... Había un niño entre yo y... Se llama Confianza. Ya eso no existe. Ya no hay confianza entre mi hermano y yo. Me duele porque mi hermano de padre y madre sangra. Me duele. Y de la peor manera, con un caso bien grave, bien delicado, porque yo estoy consciente de que es delicado que es el caso. Eso no puede prejuiciar para ser.
Bueno, vamos a cogerlo paso por paso. ¿Cuáles son las multas?
Well, the one that I can issue is a $2,000 fine. Is a second violation of the existing local and state tobacco regulations. This time, well, the first time was for selling tobacco to a minor. This time is for having flavored tobacco there. I won't cite them, I can't cite them for not having a stamp or having tobacco from the insured, but I can certainly notify you are that this was for family who had that stamp. So we get fined the $2,000. They get the fine, there'll be a hearing scheduled and then you can look at suspending that tobacco permit for seven days.
Okay, hay que comenzar con esa parte. Como es la segunda violación.
La segunda.
Primero vendió a un menor de edad, sin pedir caro. Eso fue el primero. El segundo fue que estaba vendiendo flavored tobacco. Tampoco se puede, es una multa de 2,000. Sin pagar 2,000 no se puede hacer nada, cero. Entonces él vendió, pero todo lo que trabaja en el encarcelamiento y la gente en derma lee y con otros almas que quiere perder producto de tabaco tiene que perderle el carné. Simplemente, él nunca lo pidió y cuando mandamos el compliance check, no lo hizo. Y también estaba vendiendo productos que son ilegales en Massachusetts y importando, traen los cigarríos de un ancho que también es un problema porque no van a reportar el DIOB porque no pagaron impuestos, eso es otra multa. Tú tienes que aceptar que tú cogió la responsabilidad poniendo tu nombre en todo. De las multas, no tenemos derecho de reducir ni cambiar y también que cuando abren, si abren de nuevo es una suspensión de 7 días para reentendiendo el trabajo. No pueden darle trabajo por 7 días. Eso no podemos cambiar, ni tocar. No tenemos el derecho ni el poder, cero. Solo tiene que pagar la multa, tiene que aceptar que hay una suspensión de la licencia por 7 días y tiene que tener todas las licencias en orden. It's a food permit, an allergy permit, a safe, served safe. Hay varias licencias. Si tú, para mí, y yo no soy la única persona que hace las decisiones aquí, pero hay que pagar las multas, hay que consigue todas las licencias que ustedes necesitan para venir. Podemos considerar...
La licencia estaba al día, toda.
Todas las licencias están al día.
Is all his licensure for food and all that stuff were up to date?
Yeah. No, no, we do know that he applied. He just was not inspected. He submitted the application for food, for tobacco. They just go and take care of that.
Right, but I don't process the permission application. So if a tobacco permit had not been issued...
He has been issued.
Has been issued and it was posted and... Because there are two requirements. They have to have a valid permit and the permit has to be posted on the wall in the store. So if the department issues a permit, hasn't received a permit yet, it doesn't matter.
Okay. Mira, yo personalmente, yo me gustaría que tenga otro chance pero tengo que tener muchísimo cuidado con quién contratas y pasar. Ahí va a vigilar, van a vigilar mucho.
Yo estoy consciente de eso, estoy consciente de eso y sé que...
No sé, no puede ser cualquier persona.
No. Creo a muy claro, si me decepcionó la persona en quien yo confiaba, en quien yo creía, soy yo que botara frente a eso.
Me gustaría mencionar unas cosas.
Sí.
Y con lo hemos conversado. Manejar un establecimiento de comida, no solamente es una persona que entienda lo que es estar vigilando, en qué fecha se expiran los productos, es una persona que esté al día de si hay alguna infestación de animales o insectos o roedores. Las personas que entran, en dónde poner los artículos personales aparte de lo que es los productos de la bodega. También el área de cocinar, si se va a cocinar que creo que eso es lo que deberíamos tener, sí, los miembros del board así lo consideran. Tal vez omitir esa parte y que sean más las operaciones de los productos que ya están en la taza o que ya están plastificados o que ya están listos para la venta. Pero incluso eso tiene que tener un inventario. Por eso le pedimos a ellos que hicieran un inventario de los productos. Los productos que eran perecereros, le ordenamos que lo votaran porque se iban a dañar mientras la bodega estuviera cerrada y queríamos evitar otros tipos de infecciones o bacterias que pudieran venir a en el negocio. Él lo entendió. Él nos trajo el documento de los inventarios.
No lo pude pasar todo así, no estaba... Ya habla parte, tengo una parte anotada en el cuaderno y eso. Tenía foto de la...
Estuvimos esta mañana en el negocio. El negocio está muy diferente a como era antes. Lo único que todavía a mí me preocupa, y le dije a usted que le iba a preguntar a los miembros de la junta, ¿qué íbamos a hacer con esos productos medicinales que no se pueden vender sin receta médica? Una cosa es ser culturalmente sensible y otra cosa es seguir exponiendo a nuestra comunidad. Entonces tendríamos que llegar a un acuerdo, qué se podría vender, cuáles cosas no son permitidas y... Y si se les otorga una segunda oportunidad, el departamento va a estar trabajando con ustedes muy de la mano porque vamos a estar muy pendientes de cada paso que ustedes hacen.
Estoy consciente de todo eso. Me gustaría una lista de lo que sí se puede vender porque a mí no me interesa vender cosas que no se pueden, pero que yo no quiero tener problema. Si yo lo que puedo vender es una menta, una menta yo voy a vender. Si veo que el negocio no...
Yo creo que estamos dispuestos a renovar la licencia vendiendo todo menos comida preparada. Con tiempo, si vemos que todo está subiendo bien, podemos considerar ese paso a la nueva comida preparada. Pero las medicinas que no son legales, que son solamente con receta médica, obvio que no. Los tabacos de flavored tobacco, tampoco. Cigarrio de otro estado, definitivamente no.
Esto lleva casi 7 días para el tabaco. Necesito saber qué tipo de tabaco se puede vender, que sea legal, que se pueda vender en el estado.
Podemos conversar con usted. Eso es muy fácil.
De corazón, a mí no me interesa vender cosas que perjudiquen la salud a otro ser humano porque me gana la culpa sobre algún hijo mío. Puedo pasar algo en el mano mío.
Si nosotros ayudamos, usted está dispuesto a invirtir su tiempo. Yo sé que usted vive una hora de aquí y como un trabajador de salud para 20 años en esta ciudad es muy importante que cuido la salud del público. Pero usted está dispuesto a invirtir su tiempo porque si no... Si usted no está dispuesto a poner su tiempo y cambiar, vamos a darlo ahora. Yo sé que invirtiste miles de dólares y fracasaste por su hermano, pero yo estoy en esta mesa porque yo ha fracasado con mi hermano también. Las cosas pasan. Pero si usted está dispuesto a hacer ese cambio, yo creo que podemos ayudarte.
Perfecto.
Okay. Well, you want to make a motion and if you pay all his fines, we can reissue a food permit with no prepared foods.
I would like to make a motion. Any of that.
So we will, with some conditions?
Oh, yeah. We do the conditions. One is to pay his fines that will be issued. Two is a seven-day tobacco suspension. Three is no prepared foods sold on the establishment until authorized. And four is to make an inventory of all products.
So I would like to make a motion to...
What was the last, what was the last condition?
The inventory of products, products that he's gonna have.
They're still there.
So I would like to make a motion to give him back his license with conditions of him being closed for seven days for smoke regulations, the $2,000 fine that he will not sell any food that needs to be prepared, only preheated food.
Prepacked.
Prepacked food, prepackaged food, sorry.
And the other listing?
Maintain an inventory.
Maintain an inventory of all perishables and also work with the city to, in regards of selling, what he can and can't sell, in regards to any pharmaceuticals, anything of sorts.
Second motion.
Before you take a vote on the motion, I just want to clarify how this is gonna work because this is different in the process that we follow as far as issuing a citation and scheduling a hearing to suspend the permit. So I issue a fine, send to the store, certify. Was to pay the fine, then we schedule a hearing to suspend, but you're already making a deal saying that, you know, if he agrees to accept the suspension, then you can allow them to open the store immediately. Is that, is that really?
Once.
If he pays the suspension and he agrees with that...
So there'll be no other hearings? Okay, so this will be a deal.
This is a deal.
He's accepting, this is a condition, right?
Trying to get this done and not drag it on till next month.
Usted entiende que estamos yendo porque si no lo hacemos sí, usted tiene que venir dos o tres veces y el tiempo va a ser más largo para su licencia y nosotros estamos tratando con el auto junto para resolverte más rápido.
Right, right. No, they have to see an operation. Right. Just to be clear, so when the suspension, even though there's not gonna be a separate hearing to decide whether to suspend for seven business days, that suspension is gonna take place once the place is operational. So right now it's closed, we did a compliance check, which tried to check that place, it was locked. So I understand it has been closed. But the time that they've been closed doesn't come for the second...
Yes, yes.
The second resistance.
Bond reopen.
Yes, yes.
So make a motion for the seven days.
So I would like to make a motion or amendment. The seven days start from when you reopen. So you reopen the 20th, then it'll be seven days from the 20th. You'll be able to...
I'll notify them when it turns to start.
Yeah. And then we'll notify you when it's gonna start, but from the day you reopen, seven days, you're not be able to sell cigarettes or tobacco products.
Right, I can't control that, I don't know when they're gonna reopen. So let them reopen first. Once they're operational, then I'm gonna send a letter saying when it's gonna start, when this is gonna start. So this way I can check. Let's repeat the motion.
Yes.
He's got to repeat that. Okay.
And so...
Yes. So our motion to allow this establishment to reopen, as soon as they reopen, they will be contacted by Caesar and then they will spend seven days without able to sell any tobacco products. A fine of $2,000. I will reallow them to sell food, but it has to be prepackaged.
Only required licenses.
All the required licenses will be up to par.
No illegal products on the premises.
No illegal products and you'll work with our city hall to make sure which products are legal and not legal to sell.
Yeah, that was my first guess.
That was a more... Okay, well, I think she's got it all. Okay, a second motion.
You have to take a vote on that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so entendisto. Preguntas. Preguntas, sí o no.
No, 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 no.
Okay. No es tan... Pero tiene que poner a alguien cargado, es responsable, tiene que estar presente. Porque si pasa de nuevo, no va a haber...
Y ya son los complicados que es, el delicado que...
No contrata cualquier persona.
No.
Este es el chance. Si viene de nuevo, no hay chance. Porque nosotros estábamos pensando, no date el chance del tan grave el caso es.
Okay, bueno, fuerte.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Pasé buena noche. Y no lo voy a dejar bajar. Gracias.
Pasé buena noche. That was a lot of people. It all looked like going heroin together. So it's not culturally sensitive, but it was like... We're just like, they really looked like a shady crowd.
Yes, yes.
Like, okay, we have our permission to go back and sell whatever you want.
I was gonna land all here.
Yeah, no, Jesus Christ.
That's why I was looking this way. Well, I've seen some of those faces around.
Oh, sure. I have too. Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And this is the start of the year.
What is this?
That's what you wrote.
Oh, I would love to talk about the thing I've been...
Well, it's on the agenda, so you got the floor as soon as she comes back.
Right, you went into your business here first. So you're taking the minutes, right? She's taking the minutes?
Yeah.
You're writing the minutes, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah?
Okay, so our next item on the agenda is going back to reinvent the wheel. Overview City of Blons' hookah regulations. Discussion of possible policy change about hookah smoking in private clubs. Alright, you got the floor, Mr.
Hello, everybody. I hope you had a good new year. Years ago, when this hookah regulation passed, I was taken off the board because I had different opinions of political powers. So now that I am back on the board, and it's been many years that I've been back on the board, and we're trying to make changes to this, I feel that this law was, is incorrect. I feel that if we are allowing establishments to already use tobacco, I really don't care. And if we're allowing private clubs to use tobacco, I really don't care in how to use it, if it's a pipe or it's a tobacco pipe, if it's a private location. I was very hesitant to try to do this because hookah was out of control in all these public, in all these locations. You could not go to a restaurant without having a hookah pipe. But I feel that if you're in a private location, and those are the bylaws and everything, you sign up to be able to smoke cigarettes or hookahs in a private location, I feel you should be able to. So these are the suggestions on the hookah rules. I would just like to add the word "public", meaning the regulations on smoke establishments on hookahs will deal with a public location. I do not want any restaurants or any place where they're eating, that's considered a public location, to have any kind of smoke on the hookah. But I feel in a private location, if everybody is set up by bylaws and you cannot go to the location unless you are a signed-in member, I do not have an issue with hookahs.
What would prevent a bar that we know on Essex Street from saying, "We're a private club tonight, and you pay two dollars to become a member, and we're gonna let you in, and you can smoke all the hookah you want"?
Because private clubs have to go through a certain regulation, you can't go public-private. It's just, you're either private on the way, or you're public.
So where are the protections for the workers? I mean, the reason we passed these regulations is to protect people that work in these establishments from exposure to tobacco products. Some people have no choice, but this is where they work, this is where they make their money. Why are we gonna allow smoking indoors, whether it be public or private, when the goals of these regulations were to protect the workers predominantly?
Because it's happening already. There are private locations that have, you smoke. You can go to the firemen, leave him, and smoke cigarettes. You can go to other private locations and smoke cigarettes. I just feel that we're demonizing what we're smoking it from. This is what I've got from the public. The public has expressed to me that they would like somewhere they can smoke a hookah. I want them to do it in the safest way, and I feel that in a private location, a private location is very similar to your house, so I don't feel we should...
But you know Attica is just gonna become a private club.
No, because they gotta go to zoning.
But that's what they're gonna do, they're gonna go to zoning, and most of these bars will become private clubs. And that's, that's the problem. I don't think it's like just the English Club and a couple other, you know, establishments that it's kinda like we're gonna let them smoke hookah, but everybody else doesn't get to smoke hookah because Attica and Bali's and all these places are not club. They're gonna, most of the establishments are gonna come to us and cry foul. All the ones on Essex Street, all the fancy new, you know, sushi places.
But they're gonna zone for those things. To be a private club, there's certain regulations that you have to go through.
I just don't understand why you wanna do this.
Because I feel that some people have come up to me, thousands, many, many thousands of people, so...
Thousands of people members of private clubs?
No, no, so I throw, like, car club shows, and I have talked to many people that enjoy hookah, and I just would like to create a venue for it. If they smoke a cigarette or a hookah, I don't see there a difference in it.
Hookah's disgusting, I don't know why.
Yeah, but just don't go to that place. If they wanna smoke a hookah, give them a venue to smoke a hookah.
And their house.
May I comment on this?
Yes.
So, Mr. Gill approached me, he said that he wanted to do this, he's been wanting to do this for a while now.
Yes.
And, but our means are, have been cut short because we have a city council meeting that happens right afterwards. I, and I explained to him that because of my role, I have to take a stand on this. My stand is in opposition to this idea, I think it's a bad idea, and I have a few reasons why I think it's a bad idea. Originally, when the board decided to go and ban smoking in some places and treat hookah smoking differently, one of the concerns was not just, just the impact of tobacco on people's health, whether it's for the smoking, whether they actually ingest in the product, but also because when you smoke a hookah, sometimes a hookah pipe has one holes. And they have two or three hoses. And in a perfect world, you know, there'll be separate disposable tips that you put in the holes. So if you're gonna share one hose, then you have your tip, and then when you're gonna inhale it, then you use a tip and inhale it, and then if somebody, your friends turn out, so you take your tip off and you put this tip on, it does that. So one of the concerns was that while people are drinking alcohol, and that's what happens in private clubs as well, they're drinking alcohol, so they are under the influence. We can't trust that they're gonna behave in a way that's most sensible considering the dangers of spreading hepatitis B, for example, or hepatitis C, because of sharing tips. That was, that was one of the grave concerns that we had originally. You know, the spread of disease because people, because they're under the influence, they just say no sharing tips. That's one thing. Another thing is that this would create a looking enforcement issue, an enforcement problem. I'm gonna tell you why. Most hookah tobacco products are flavored, most of them are. Some claim to be non-flavored. So let's say, for example, there's smoking at a place, there's smoking hookah, and there's an allegation, all in all, that they're smoking flavored stuff. We don't have the means to pay for a lab to test the product. I can't test it, ascertain right at the time of inspection, that that particular product is flavored or non-flavored.
All of them are flavored.
Well, some are, some are not, but those are just like, almost nonexistent. When they're not flavored, they add some flavors afterwards. I mean, so they can show you a packaging or dispackaging, it says from their factory, it's not flavored, but they can just add flavoring to, you know, as they make the hookahs available. So, this would be like an enforcement nightmare, it's impossible to enforce this this way. That's number two. Number three is that by state regulations, smoking private clubs is allowed in a members-only section. For a club to allow smoking like cigarettes or cigars, for example, it has to happen in a members-only section, the smoke has to be segregated to that location. If anybody's coming in, it has to be a member, or an invitee of a member, they have to actually sign that person in, just like Steven was saying, they have to sign the person in. Whoever brings that person in has to stay through all the duration while the invitee is there, or, you know, the invited person is there. And and what's gonna happen is that, you know, when they offer this stuff there, you probably know this, some of these clubs, they already operate as a business open to the public. They say they're private clubs, but, you know, they have lunchtime where everybody can just come through the door, and they're served food, they're served, you know, alcohol. Why wouldn't they be served in a hookah as well? So that's an invitation for the public to come in and for them to operate as a public place. Now, ironically, if you operate as a public place, they are prohibited by law from having smoking. But I'm only one person, I cannot be checking these places all the time. So if it is a private club and say, "Well, we're a private club", but then during lunchtime, they open the doors, everybody comes in, and now they're offering hookahs. Now we're gonna have the barber shop, like, for example, I just received a complaint from the state. There's a barber shop on Prospect Street, they are offering hookah, smoking. They actually have like, you know, a way to get the smoke and the vapor out the back of the building, you know, so, and they serve alcohol. Like, you're like, you're having your hair done, they serve alcohol, and you get to smoke hookah, and the electronic versions of those products as well. So this would be like an invitation not only for the private clubs to operate as open to the public places, like, open to business, but also for other types of businesses to be encouraged to say, "Hey, now let's continue doing this", because, listen, the private clubs are doing it, and they're not really private clubs. They're open, they're open to the public. That's number three. Number four. The Board of Health's primary mandate is the adoption and enforcement of reasonable regulations within intent to protect public health. This is not it. The board, the board's mandate is not to listen to what the public wants. It's we need to look at, you know, public health matters, and decide what's best for the health of the community. So when people say, "Hey, now we'd like to do away with these regulations", it's irrelevant what they want. And because you're a board member, then you pretty much just swore a note to say, "Hey, we're gonna protect public health". Doing this is just like the opposite of that. It raises concerns about, you know, a likely detriment to the community if it just opened this club. And finally, relaxing smoking restrictions sends the wrong message. These restrictions are adopted to protect public health, like I said. Changing them to allow hookah smoking will serve as an invitation to anyone who wishes to change regulations, to come before you and lobby for that, for that, for that reason. Hey, let's, let's, let's change this, regulations not very conducive for us making money. So, we can't be in the business of changing regulations so people can make money, so they can have monetary gain. It's not the reason. Even though I understand where Steven is coming from, you know, smoking is already allowed in private clubs, but I think that going back into regulation like this, for the reasons why I just stated, I think it's a bad idea, I think it sends a wrong message, and I think that, you know, it's gonna create other problems. This would be like the first domino, and it's gonna be like a nice cascading effect after this.
My feeling is, we came so far, and it was so hard, and those public hearings were so painful, and we were attacked, and we had a lot of support at the same time, and then everybody just broke all the rules, and it was mayhem, and everybody was getting fined. I think those days are behind us because we stood our ground, and we pushed and pushed and pushed to get the regulations we have, and then the state superseded us and saved our ass by making it a state law. It just seems like what you wanna do is just, it's, it's, it's like, it's going backwards, and it also is, everybody's gonna come before us. Palma, Attica, Bali's...
None of them will be able to be zoned for private...
Then they're gonna all wanna do outdoor hookah. They can do it, we should be able to do it.
Well, because it's a private location, and it's a zoning issue.
Then everybody's gonna, you know how you private clubs suddenly, because there's a lot of money in hookah and alcohol? Tons of money. And so, if one club is allowed to do it...
How many locations anymore can have our even zone to, because there's certain zoning to have a private club? So, there is very few that are able to practice as a private club.
Can I add something just to special for a moment? One is, as I'm listening to this, I'm gonna pull the age card, I'm the oldest person here in this room, and I recall when there were no regulations on tobacco. And I recall very, I was working in the field as a health agent when this, when we began to have controls on tobacco. And it was a huge, huge battle, and it was a huge success. But I agree with Caesar that it's not for the board, the Board of Health should not be taking a step backwards. It's really not, there's so many problems in the city, and there's so many issues that we should be dealing, that you should be dealing with. And with one, we've not fully learned on tobacco, but we've accomplished a huge amount. And if it's, if it's, if it's not, if there's no evidence that there's a health benefit in doing what you're suggesting, then I don't see why the board should be considering doing it. If there's a health benefit, if it improves the health of the community, well, then that's something that should be considered. But I don't see that here. If it's a zoning issue, if it's an issue about money, that's a different department, but the health department is...
How many private clubs are there?
I don't know. It's quite a few. Are there, are there between eight and fourteen?
Are they visible, are they like on the main street, or are they...
No, to, to, to get zoned, you have to be out like the Portuguese, you have to be in the outskirts. Is there a zoning that has to be, like, all under criteria to do it? So, that's why, like, tell you, there's components in the city that they get pushing for a public. And I pushed back.
For what?
So, there's a component in the city that they want a city councillor, and a lot of city councillors will, are open to allowing hookah back. So this is almost like my medium, so I talked to my fellow constituents, I'm a very...
So you said this is a compromise?
This is almost a compromise, to see how it goes, because they're, you know, the powers that be and the main man upstairs wants it to happen.
Wants hookah?
Yes, he actually expressed to me that he wanted like Vegas, you could smoke a hookah right next to him and nobody would smell it. And this is, nobody would smell the hookah. So, that, I told him that would never happen, so this is almost my medium way to see if it works or not. It's gonna come back to the city if we like it or not, I would just like it in a private setting.
When it's gonna come back to the city, whether we like it or not?
I'm telling you, they're gonna push it. I'd say within two or three years, they're going to push public smoking back.
Well, I've been doing this...
In the hookah, I'm telling you.
I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-nine. Boards of Health have, they have a lot of authority, a lot of power, and they suffer a lot of pressure, like political pressure, like you described it. But, you know, and once it passes something, it has the effect of a law, and it doesn't matter the American appoint, you know, the members of this board, but once you're appointed, your authority comes from the state statute. And your mandate is clear. I think, I think, if you open this door, then this becomes what, what all the other departments in the state might have become right now, what Inspection Service has become. Like, you know, he can do whatever he wants, and the work that inspectors do is worth nothing. Because you can just call the mayor and say, "You know, I understand, I wanna pay this fee, I wanna pay this fine". I think it's a wrong idea, I think it sends a wrong message. And I think that the problem isn't envisioned. If they, if they come to, 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 to happen, then we cross that bridge when it happens. But I think that opening the door right now, I think it's a bad idea.
I think you need to have a public health rationale for doing this. You need to be able to show reasonably that there's a public health benefit in doing this. And I don't see it. So what are, what are they allowed to do right now in public, private clubs?
Well, they can, like I said, they can have smoking if they manage to segregate the smoke in the members-only section. Not all clubs can do that, because it costs money to like, you know, really seal a room. Is what I'm saying?
So private clubs have members only and non-members?
Yes, because oftentimes they have function halls, and they rent those function halls to the public, so those areas have to be smoke-free. If they choose, and not all members of these clubs want to have smoking, but if they choose to have smoking, the state law allows it because this board did not pass a local regulation, you know, doing away with that exception to the state law. Remember when there was a conversation about having hookah lounges or smoking bars here? You changed the local regulation and eliminated an exception that exists in the state statute that would allow them to do that. Some cities and towns, they have those smoking bars. Those don't exist here, they don't exist in law, because you change, the board changes...
The state regulations has...
Exceptions.
Exceptions, like Methuen.
Right.
Methuen allows...
Smoking bars, so they have a smoking bar that can operate as a, as a hookah lounge. Does Methuen allow that? I think so.
They have that one right on...
Elixir, Elixir...
Now, the one open is one stop.
Well, that, that I don't know.
Sahara, Sahara's been there forever. The Sahara Club, it means Sahara Club or private club, and they, they do...
I don't think they're private club.
They're private, right?
I don't think they are. I've been there as a patriot, and it had the feeling it was a private club. But anyways, so the state law prohibits smoking in certain workplaces, but it accepted others. And the one that we eliminated here was a smoking lounge, a smoking bar exception. We did not eliminate the one for private clubs, we can still do that. It's going exactly the opposite direction of your proposal. So you propose, "Let's relax the regulation, allow hookah", you know, we could just go the other way and say, "Let's stop smoking private clubs", but we didn't do that here.
We didn't stop smoking in private clubs, so they can smoke, but they can't smoke hookah.
Right, no, no, right now...
That makes sense, though.
What I'm saying is, yeah, the reason why they don't smoke hookah is because hookah presents another, a different set of risks, like, you know, spreading hepatitis B is just one of them.
Can they smoke weed?
Is that clear, yes?
So, so that was...
They cannot do that in public, so, so...
Tito Jackson is opening up a social consumption bar in Boston, at Quincy Market.
Yeah, the state law doesn't allow the smoking of marijuana in public. So it goes back to what the definition of public and private is. So, a private... So, a private club, for our purposes, is a not-for-profit entity that has a set membership, that has rules. If they, if they choose to allow smoking, they're not allowed to allow smoking. If they choose to allow smoking, they have to make sure that they, uh, meet the criteria.
I'm sure they're already smoking hookah, and weed at the private clubs.
But that's what they signed up, it's private, you know, if you wanna go to a private men's club, and within the law, you should be able to do what's allowed.
Men's club? Do you even have men's club?
No, but that's, that's an example.
See, the thing, the thing is, then I can't comment on.
Don't you go to the men's?
I, I can't comment on the marijuana law, because I don't know what the definition of private is. Because the way these clubs operate, they're open for business during lunch, you could just go in, try it. Nobody's gonna ask you to sign anything.
I, what was it, the English club, is that still open?
I think the Portuguese club and a few other ones.
The Knights, Knights of Columbus.
So your point is, they're allowed to smoke, why can't they smoke hookah or anything?
Or anything they wanna smoke, so that's what I'm getting at. You know, if it's a private location, you set up the bylaws. If you're not willing to fall into that criteria, or that is a detriment to your health, that is a private location, don't go there. I believe in the right choice, so that's my, that's what I'm fighting for. Do I think it's detrimental? Yes.
And I totally understand that, but I think like, like I mentioned before, this is room for various reasons, I just cited five. It's not just because, hey, you know, they can't smoke tobacco, why can't they smoke, uh, the hookah pipe? It's not just that, it's not just the hepatitis.
It's the same thing, really.
Uh, not really, it's not a cigarette. Like, you know, if you smoke a cigarette, you're not sharing that cigarette with anybody else.
Oh, most people.
Well, people do.
And then, and then what I said about, you know, changing regulation because the public wants it. And why do they want it? Because they wanna make money.
I'm changing it for the choice, you know, and.
I understand that, that's your position, right. So.
And, and I, I defend that, if you, what's the difference, what's like a cigarette and other things, and if this is a private location, we have bylaws, you can't come into a location unless you are a member and have to stay there until you leave, and there's that control.
If, if this board allows this, I won't be able to enforce it. It's gonna be untenable. I can just go in and say, well, you smoke an inflated tobacco product, can't prove it.
Yeah, but I really.
Well, we don't really, I mean, do you really go into private clubs to enforce the regulation?
Well, it's, it's, I enforce tobacco regulations.
I know, but more in terms of the sales and what happens.
It doesn't exclude private clubs.
Light clubs and restaurants.
I've been to private clubs, uh, usually when I go to a private club is because I gotta complain. And sometimes I gotta complain from a club member that doesn't want smoking to take place, the smoking's taking place. When I go there, I wanna make sure that if they allow me smoking, they're always smoking correctly. As, you know, the meeting, all the requirements are in the statute. It's, it's a difficult thing to enforce, it's impossible to enforce, especially for a person.
How many other communities in Massachusetts allow hookah?
Don't know, but it's, I, I, at some point it was eleven. Uh, I'm not sure if Elixir closed, I don't know, I, I don't know what the local language reads, whether it's.
I think, you know, when they closed, they just didn't.
Elixir, violence and all a bunch of other stuff. It was like shootout, Elixir.
That's what hookahs bring?
No, no, that's why. No, because that place was out of control, that was, it was a public location too, it wasn't private.
Where's the closest hookah bar that's legal to Lawrence?
I think they could win.
Methuen is?
What I, what I wanna share this is, um, listening to, from people who are interesting, perhaps, like, uh, Stephen mentioned before, in bringing this back. The, the reasons why I don't see it's ways more than preventing, for instance, minors to adopting this in the future, right? Um, if we, if we allow these things to, to happen, like, where else are we, are we gonna allow? And, and so alcohol, hookah, what does that, what, what is that, what does that make to the bodies? So, that's, that's one concern. And so you may say, um, well, if that's their decision, right? But I, I'm thinking about prevention, right, how can we prevent more stuff to happen? I remember these public hearings having hundreds, if not more.
Yeah.
People coming here.
Crazy hearings here, yeah.
Just, no, don't do it, no, don't do it. If we allow just an opportunity to do that, and I'm not saying not to do it, but these people are gonna come back, and they're gonna, and they're gonna fight back, and, and we, if we decide that this is okay, we're gonna have to be able to present a reason, a real reason why we're allowing this. And, 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 like we mentioned before, this is a public health concern. What is it, what is it gonna be beneficial to the community to open this, to allow this? Yes, it might be some, of some people's preference, but if you wanna do that, in general, what is the benefit for the community?
I don't feel that there is a benefit, but tobacco is tobacco. I, 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 we are, we're kind of demonizing the, where, how they consume the tobacco. And I still believe that a private location, if it's something legal, they should be able to do it legally in their private location. Because a private location, is my understanding, a club is very similar to your house.
Yeah, but, yeah, I understand that, but they don't operate, they don't operate as a private club. I mean, the, the, a private residence, it's a private place, I mean, people can do whatever they want in the private place, as long as they don't hurt people, right? But a private club, even though some people, I've, I've, I've heard this argument in the past, when the city of Cambridge decided to ban smoking private clubs, this was done while there was still a director there. And people say, oh, you know, we're gonna lose business, we're gonna go out of business, this is gonna happen, the whole world was gonna go, come crashing because no smoking would be allowed. And then there was nothing like that. And one of the arguments they made was, hey, you know, this is an extension of our houses, it's not, the operator's a business. They, they have a hard time operating as a private club, they do. So, it's, it's a business masquerading as a private club, a lot of times. There's one company, they opened up one of these private clubs in Worcester, they wanted to do the same thing in Lowell. And I stopped them because, you know, you could see that, you know, they want to operate as a business. There was another one that did the same thing in Lowell, he opened the business, said, no, I wanna make this a private club, I said, you can't. Because you're not set up as a not-for-profit organization, you don't have a set membership, and you don't have the means to segregate the smoke. Can't do it.
So private clubs have to be not-for-profit, they have to have a board, they have.
Yes, by state law.
It can't be a privately owned private club.
Their bylaws are pretty stringent with to, to be a private club, to do it correctly.
So, do you have to establish a, a private club, they decide to do this, or is it just a private club for smoking?
No, if it is a private club, under the state law, they could allow smoking so long as they meet other criteria. For that exception. So there's, there's, there's a, like, I listed, I listed some of the requirements here. The smoke has to be segregated, that smoke has to be in the members-only area. If they invite people from the, the public, that person has to be a guest, that guest has to be signed in. Uh, the member has to remain with the guest while the guest is there, all of these have to be properly documented. None of these clubs have the structure to operate this way.
None of that is enforceable, zero. And then my private clubs can, they'll just let anybody in that wants to sign and get a, get a, get a club membership for the evening.
Right, so knowing this.
Charge the thirty bucks and, and let them in.
Exactly, knowing this, all the, the bars and restaurants are gonna look at the private.
They're gonna complain.
You want the same thing.
Yeah, they're like, we're losing customers, dude, and they're all, everybody's going to the private club and smoke hookah, why can't we smoke hookah?
Because Lawrence is so small, there isn't much more space for private clubs. I don't think the way it's designed.
No, the restaurant, the restaurant's a lot.
They're gonna, they're gonna see people going to the private clubs and smoking hookah. And they're gonna be like, wait a minute, this is, what, this is, this is unfair. They're, they're all gonna come back to the board, they're all gonna want a public hearing, Brian's gonna push you to, to do something. He's gonna throw another member on the board that's all pro-hookah. It's just, it's, it's a cascading.
I don't think I'll ever vote, tell you the truth, I don't care what kind of pressure, and I've gone there that, to see hookahs in a public setting. You know, they've asked me to try to present and put it together to city, to city council, and I've said no. Uh, so I, I feel that you should be like, once again.
It's not like everybody that goes to a private club is a smoker, first of all. If I went to a private club, I'd be horrified that they were smoking hookah in my private club. Because I like to go to a private club and have a drink, I like to go in a private club and play pool, I like to go to a private club and see my friends. But if I could have to go to a private club and, and be subjected to hookah smoke, I would leave that private club. So it's, I think it's a minority of people that wanna go to their private club and be able to smoke a hookah. It's the young people that wanna smoke.
Give them the ability to do.
Young, right, young people don't go to private clubs.
Give them ability to smoke it in controlled setting.
I think, I think, I'm willing to debate it further, I think we need a third board member to really do this, right? You know, and we could continue to debate it, I don't, I don't, I put it on the agenda every month, I'd be happy to talk about it. I think we need a third board member to really talk about it. If Brian is so gung ho about putting in a hookahs in private clubs, he better find a board member that's willing to do that, because.
Right.
I don't think that we're gonna vote, the two of us, I don't think that's fair to change the regulation with two board members. We need a larger board, we need to have debate, this would require a public hearing, so you're gonna get a lot of clubs saying, why not us, you're gonna get a lot of people from the schools saying, absolutely not, this sends a bad message. You're gonna get people from the state tobacco control standing up and saying, no, no, no. We're gonna have a hundred and fifty people for this public hearing, are you ready for that?
Speaking, speaking of that, this would not be the right time, I'm gonna say this, because I've already said it before.
What about that?
I have a list of ten items to, to change in the local regulation, the sales regulation.
Ten items?
Ten items, I presented those items to you in the past, you already forgotten, because, because the meetings get changed, and cancel the meetings, and never, never did it, but uh, I went through the process in Lowell, and I had the same process here, so I, I, at one point, a couple of times actually, I introduced, hey, this is a list of changes we need to make in the local regulation that covers the sale of tobacco products. Some of these regulations, some of these changes have to do with, like, you know, being compliant with the state law, having the same kinds of suspensions and, and, and tolling periods and, and fines and et cetera. Others is to facilitate enforcement and to clarify things. So, there's about ten.
I remember.
I went through the process in Lowell, they've all been approved, and, uh, and I, I introduced it here a couple of times, but then I had to back off because there were so many sales, I had to.
Tell me what?
Sale to minors.
Yeah, postponing, yes, I remember.
Right, so we got postponing, postponing, postponing.
And the meeting's had to end in an hour.
Right, so we need a, a, a longer meeting like this one. And having a meeting when the city councils have the meeting at that same room, has, hasn't allowed us to tackle all the business that, that's before the. So this is one of them, and I'm waiting for the opportunity.
Can I add to that too? One of the things that caused more confusion, because your regulations are outdated, and they do not meet the minimum requirements of the state statutes, that, that caused the, the misunderstanding, shall we say, with Alfonso and prior administration, or prior, on, on, you know, ISD administrations. And it got very contentious and very confusing about, you know.
So, should we, should we work on next meeting adopting these updated state regulations?
It'll be a process, so I'll come reintroduce it again.
Okay.
We set the time to further discussion if necessary, then we schedule a, a public hearing. For these, we give a public hearing.
You need a public hearing, just to adopt state regulations?
Well, to make the changes, we're gonna make, yes.
For tobacco, I think, for other reasons, no.
Technically, the Board of Health has the ability to change regulations, or to make regulations without a public hearing, but it's not advisable. Especially if there's a history that this board historically has done in such a fashion. So, historically, all the boards that I've worked with, I think, you know, we, uh, you know, we hold public hearings when the change is significant. And these will be significant, significant in the sense of, there's a, there's quite a number, there's about ten items.
I mean, you know, changing, letting private clubs smoke tobacco any way they want, even though they're already smoking it now, doesn't seem like a major change, and it sounds like it doesn't.
It would, it would, it would.
It could be done without a public hearing.
If you wanted to, I would advise.
With nobody watching.
Right, I mean, I guess you could do it that way, but if you're gonna change the regulation in a way that's gonna restrict people's ability to do whatever they wanna do, which, which includes some of the items that I proposed, then.
So that's different, I'm talking about his.
Right, his idea, yes, his idea, I think, it's, it's, it's a bad idea in concept, but I think that if it took the process, it would be a simpler process.
And are we speaking only of the existing private clubs, or are we gonna allow new clubs, private clubs?
I would say, don't do it at all, but if you're gonna do it, then.
That's why, that's why I'm bringing this in.
If you're gonna do it, probably wanna cap it. To the existing number of establishments that are already off of smoking, or whatever, or existing clubs in the city. If they meet the criteria, you know, they, they could, uh, if they meet the criteria to allow smoking, they could allow hookah smoking. And another thing I wouldn't recommend.
We could, it wouldn't even have to use the word hookah smoking, we could say they can smoke in any form they deem acceptable.
Well, he suggested the language, and the reason why he suggested the language he did, is because the language here is very specific. There's no hookah presence that by, or it's smoking, in any place that's covered under, that's subject to your authority.
For private clubs which allow smoking, could, we, it could be as simple as they can smoke tobacco products in, in, in.
Well, he suggested change, he's suggesting adding one word.
What's that?
Uh, to, to the, to the section, he's saying, well, hookah pipes, as defined herein, and the smoking thereof is hereby prohibited in all public establishments, as opposed to just establishments. Subject to the Board of Health regulations, you know, Lawrence, as well as outdoor spaces accessory to that too. So, if you decide to go with this route, which I strongly oppose, I'd say, let's add a definition of a public establishment, just to make it clear, because definitions matter.
Oh, yeah.
So, but again.
We'll continue to talk about it.
All right, thank you.
We're not, we're not shunning you.
It's not dead in the water.
In my opinion, I believe in choice, if somebody wants to go.
Well, we, we heard, we heard you.
No, 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 that's just.
It's not, it's not a, it's more of a political thing.
So, 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 the lady that was taking the minutes, she left before the meeting was up.
She's not taking.
So, so you need a copy of this here, because I, because I.
So I'll debate, we'll talk about important stuff.
Well, there's more.
We're not talking about shared services this week.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
I didn't see it on the agenda.
We have time to, we can mention it briefly.
I'm telling the administration, I'm not working with them anymore.
Don't say that.
I'm waiting for the next administration. If they won't call me, they don't return my calls, they don't return my emails.
We're all busy.
You can put that in the minutes too.
So let's put this in the minutes too. We had a meeting, um, with the Lord Lawrence, Wismunda, Kelly, myself, and state representative, the state representative of DPH. No, I'm not, I'm not talking about, um, from the, uh, from the state legislature. And we talked at length about the shared services agreement, um, and it's still up in the air, but the bottom line is this. It's very, it's not possible, in my opinion at this point, to have a shared services agreement when one of the cities, namely Lawrence, does not have a health department. It's hard to share with one health department and another health department. And thus far, although you, although there was an agreement about, back in April, to appoint a health agent and to move ahead in the development and formation of a health department, it has not happened yet, and it still does not happen.
What, what, what needs to take place to make that happen?
What you need to have, your health agent needs to have the support to develop a health department. She needs to have the, whoever your agent is, in this case it's Wismunda, this person needs to have the backing and the authority, plus the budget, um, to form and to create a health department. And right now you're just.
So who has brought that to the upper echelons?
We have.
You've had a meeting with, with Octavian and Brian?
Last meeting we had was back in the fall, and at this point, we've not, just like they don't answer your phone calls.
They just say, yes, yes, sounds like a good idea, and then they never follow through, and then answer your.
Nothing happens.
Exactly.
And what happens too is that there, there are, there are, um, so far, there are rumors, for example, that they're out to, they're out, that they're in the process of finding a health director. No way of knowing if that's true or not, and if they are, they certainly have not included anybody at this table, which would be critical, to do that kind of thing. Um, the bottom line is this, when you get right down to it, um, you don't have a department, you just do not have.
Well, we, we do have a department, but we, it just falls under the umbrella of ISD.
But it doesn't do, it's not, for example, um, you're right, you have a department in name, it's, it employs one person, which is the nurse, that's your entire budget. Um, you have a department such as, well, the department is your health agent, who, um, is supervised.
We have a nurse and an. So we have a nurse and a and a health agent.
Well, the health agent's not even paid through the health department.
She's paid through health, uh, through.
As an inspector.
Yeah, as an ISD inspector.
Can you answer your question?
Sure.
There's, the the money, the 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 funds that come through this agreement, they can't be used to to fund the health department, to build it?
They could, well, they they can't be done, no, you, they they have to be, they're restricted funds in some respects, but it's through Methuen, Methuen is the fiscal agent, through the grant.
Yeah.
Um, and Methuen is moving ahead. They have epidemiologists, they have some inspectors, they're they're moving ahead with that grant. Um, this city has chosen not to.
About which part?
Probably talking about. About three hundred, no.
Three hundred for the shared services, um.
Thousand.
Yeah, and and then we have other grants, other funds, uh, for communicable diseases, right? And so that's another opportunity to develop the health department. But, uh, hiring people who are not only qualified in the medical field, but that understands what are the statutes and regulations, um, coming from the state that we have to be in compliance with. And so what will be the the staff, the right staff to bring on board if we if we really want to have a health department? Yes, we do have a health department, but it's merely you guys, um, the members of the board, the nurse and and the agents, there's no clerical staff to support the daily activities of that. The budget for for the department is used half of it or more than sixty percent to, uh, is used for the, for the nurse, um, um, salary. And so I'd like to mention again and make emphasis that in the last meeting, uh, Ethan mentioned that unfortunately, nationwide, our health department is just one dollar and some cents per capita. That's embarrassing. And so that needs to change, um, if there's any way that we can make noise to make this happen.
Should the city council, should we be addressing m- more of these issues to the city council?
I think there's.
That they're more beholden to their, they're they're, they're sort of on, in the spotlight more with the televised meetings.
Yeah, they approve the budget. I would love to do that. I would love to have the stuff, and I think that's the way it's gonna change if we go to a city council. Going through the way we're doing it now.
This administration, they're all the yes, 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 but and they don't return your emails or your phone calls.
Because let's say for example, the budget comes out for the for their approval, right, and there's nothing there for the the health department. And then you go before the city council and say, listen, this is a problem, you know, and address that issue. Uh, and least everybody is aware of what is going on.
When is, when do they start talking about the budget?
Usually in the early fall. Usually, I don't know, I'm not sure about Lawrence, but my experience in municipalities, it's early fall.
It's it's never too soon to get get their ear and say that when budget time comes. I mean, I mean, how do they fund a health department halfway through the year when the, to the jet, just, do they allocate money from some random?
You would have to. We thought, we thought we had an agreement back in April, and that would have been a perfect time to start that process last year. Nothing happened with it. Um, what really happens here is that, for example, and it and it and it reflects in practical matters. So for example, because it's sort of run through the ISD department, through the Special Services Department, um, you're still not issuing orders properly, you're still not following protocol properly, you're still not doing any of the things.
Regarding like.
Let's say for housing or for food. So for example, under food, their their process right now is you accept, you 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 process an application, but you don't do a plan review. You do that later, you don't, you don't, let's say it's a new, let's say it's a new establishment. You allow them to open, but then eventually they'll come into compliance as you go through a series of inspections. That is completely in contrary, that's completely contrary to the food code.
Especially Carlene's establishment that the city gave such a hard time to reopen after COVID. It wasn't the, I mean, that guy struggled and struggled, and he's a, he's a senior, he's a, he's a veteran, but but it it seems like they're giving some people's, you know, giving other people not.
It's not, it's it's, in other words, it's not run by the health department, it's run by ISD. And the process, so for example, is how do you get as many permits out there as possible? Because people need to operate their stores, which is absolutely correct. On the other hand, I am not aware of a single municipality in the state which does not follow at least in essence the food code. In other words, if you wanna, if you wanna open.
Yeah, and I approach him.
If you.
What do you say?
Well, I have to talk to you.
Please, though.
Talk to him?
Oh.
I mean, to talk to you, I mean.
Yeah, to me.
And that was it? You never pressed the button?
I did.
If, if I may, for example, another thing, let's say in housing, for example, they still write the tickets, not the, not orders to correct. Under orders to correct, for example, it would be this process of, you have X number of days to appeal the order to the Board of Health. You folks decide whether or not those orders are sustained or modified or 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 dismissed. But the way the process is here is it actually goes to a, um, a hearing officer, and they and they hear about the ticket.
Right.
And the hearing officer will then decide whether or not those violations are worthy of whatever. And it's never, in fact, for example, if you have a hearing here for housing, a formal hearing for housing, which many boards do every single month, if necessary, everyone's notified, the tenants are notified, the landlords are notified, the holders of the mortgage are notified. And what happens is then you have a discussion from both tenants and landlords. When you go through a hearing process, tenants are never notified. We also have a process here of when encountering, in quotes, illegal apartments, whether they're attics or basements, which is a huge, huge problem in the city, probably more so than most cities in the Commonwealth. You are ground zero for these problems.
Well, it's always been, there's always been a lot of illegal apartments.
Well, absolutely, but the point being is, is that the way they've approached it is, they do not follow the code. There are instances where people have actually taken keys away from tenants rather than go through the.
Who are you referring to?
I have no idea. Um, or, but these are things, these are basic rights for individuals, whether they should be condemned or not. And the, your health agent does not have the authority, which I'm given.
Well, listen, I I tried to reach out to the whole IT guy and said, oh, yeah, 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 I'll give her all that information. Just, just, I'll get, get, yeah, tell her to give me a call. I'll reach out to her, don't worry. And three attempts to 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 get Carlos to give her the information that the city councils have been asking me for for six months, still don't have it. She doesn't have it. He's like, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem. So obviously, he's a nice guy, he does IT for my office as well as the city. And and he, he has no good reason to withhold that information from me, other than somebody's telling him not to give us that information.
Well, the bottom, I.
But as a chairman of the Board of Health, you think that legally, I would have access to that information?
Actually, you're required to have access to that information.
So how do I, how do I get that information?
This is your. The.
If they won't give it to me.
You have.
Send a letter.
You have to advocate for it, you could, here's the bottom line. The state will not continue to fund the shared services without a department that's funding it.
Yeah, but there's nothing, nothing, everything we've tried to do has fallen on deaf ears, so what do you, what do you?
It's going from the city council. It's going from, and I think that's the only way with this is gonna be solved. I have talked to individuals in regards to, just snippets of what Ian has expressed to me. Um, but we'll take it as that they are interested, and I, I feel that we need to address it.
Dr. Lawrence, I am also reaching that point.
I just, I I.
Thank you for your help.
When I think about it, I just get so upset.
I am, I am.
I I wrote, I had, I I wrote an email to Octavian in December, I left a message, I sent a text message the other day. Not a peep. Not a peep!
When I first met you, I was hopeful. I am very much less hopeful at this point. And you will have squandered a very, very.
I will have not.
Not you, I'm trying to, the city has squandered, will have squandered, not you. The city will have squandered a very useless opportunity. You know, I pulled the eighth thing here about tobacco. When I first started in here, the state, the state has been pushing for legalization for decades, even long before, when I was in Framingham, we didn't have a record of the state funding legalization in the nineteen fifties. But for the first time, there's substantial money behind this because of COVID, and this city will lose out. This is the first time the state has actually put money behind it, and many communities are taking advantage of it. But it means you have to do health things. Means you actually have to be a health department, it means you have to, you actually have to follow the law, you have to follow the codes. You have to have an agent who actually is an agent of the board, and that agent has the support, and the financial support, and the logistical support that that agent requires.
Well, technically, Wismelda, she is the.
She is the agent.
But they don't give her any authority, no access to information. No, she can't look up who has a permit, who doesn't have a permit.
Really?
Nothing, zero.
Yeah, she's.
I have access to that.
Shut down. I'm shut down.
I have that access. I can look up permits, yeah. This is ridiculous, this is ridiculous.
This is so ridiculous.
We need that.
This is, this is so ridiculous.
Why can't you get it, and I can't?
We have no law.
I don't know, I I think everybody had it at some point, and then
Yeah.
the prior director, before he left, he just removed anybody's credentials, but mine is still active. I told, I I said to him.
Alfonso?
Yeah.
It was a mistake, he missed you. It was oversight.
It was oversight, right, but it shouldn't have been, because tobacco was right in the midst of the whole problem.
You have basically nothing.
Stop using the word you.
I'm sorry.
You have squandered.
Yeah, it's a city.
You have.
A city.
When I met you, I was hopeful, now I'm not very hopeful. You have squandered an opportunity.
I apologize.
You are to blame!
I apologize. You are not to blame. I'm talking about you, the city.
Well, I'm not the city, I'm running from the city.
Well, let's, let's get together and do a presentation with the city council.
I'll do that.
Just go ahead and do it, I I.
Let's, I know on the next meeting, it's. And we'll ask, uh, we'll ask Gregory Del Rosario to put us on the agenda.
Have you appeared before the city council yet?
I have not personally.
Well, this will be a chance, yeah.
I have not personally.
So, so why do we agree for this? Maybe for instance, uh, bring this matter to the council?
Yes, go, go for a presentation, what it is, you know, a percentage.
You wanna go on that?
I've been dying to do this for a while, you know that? They've been hearing me for a while.
Next meeting?
You're in the same situation.
Never.
I'll have to let you know.
I'm wondering where you're dying, actually, marrying me.
Who means private club?
Let's hope so.
Have you been to, uh, Mexico City?
Oh, they're cool.
Have you been to Mexico City?
Yeah.
So, so Dr. Lawrence, uh, the February twelfth, the bat- not, not twelve, the thirteenth?
I'll have to let you know.
Nope.
No?
I'm not here for the whole month.
It'd be nice if you could just pick a date today, because it's really hard to plan for these meetings if it just happened like, you know.
Twenty seventh is the safest thing to do it.
Twenty seventh, I cannot, I'm gonna be in Mexico.
Actually, the twenty, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going, it's, that's February vacation?
No, February vacation is the week of the eighteenth, right?
It's like the eighteenth to the twenty something, I'm gonna be in Mexico City.
Uh, does it have to be, is it, is it gonna be in this room?
It can be in this room if you guys want.
It's much better because you have more time.
Yes.
Uh, you know, it's good that you have a three-member board, because if one member's missing, you still have a board.
Yeah, but you know how many people I've sent, you know how many resumes I've sent up?
Oh, I, I, hundreds, how about the twenty?
So what is your date of you being in Mexico?
Uh, February vacation.
I think it's like.
Which is what?
February vacation.
Is it, is it done?
When's George, when's President's Day? I was just gonna say Washington's birthday, when's President's Day?
I'm gonna be gone from the seventeenth to the twenty fifth.
Twenty seventh.
I didn't say all the way.
Twenty seventh?
Twenty seven?
February.
Twenty seven.
Alright, you wanna adjourn the meeting?
No, they just wanna keep.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting with the Board of Health.
Alright, okay, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the time.